Do you have a time on a phone, Scott? What time is it on your phone?
Sixty.
Okay, because this thing says forty-seven, so is that right?
Yeah.
We're going to get started in about one minute. We've got David here. Can't get started without David.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, I wanted to suggest that we keep in our thoughts and our prayers everyone who was involved in the tragedy this past week that occurred on Britney Court, and not just the friends and family members, but also our first responders who had to deal with this. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Seach.
Here.
Alderman Malumwey.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Before we move into our agenda, I did want to make note of the fact that Mayor Renner will be returning to the helm on October the first, which is next Sunday, so we'll look forward to having him back here. Our first order of business is recognitions and appointments. We have two proclamations, one for Community Planning Month. Are you our happy recipient, Mr. David Renner? This proclamation is for Community Planning, and it starts out with an unbelievably true statement: "Whereas change is constant and affects all of our cities, towns, suburbs, counties, townships, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans help us manage this change in a way that provides better choices for where we work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all of our residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute endorse National Community Planning Month, and the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other city planners who contribute their time and expertise to improving Bloomington, Illinois, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by our professional city planners in the city of Bloomington, we extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals and designate October 2017 as Community Planning Month. And thank you for all you do, Tom. We have one other that is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is there someone here? Thank you. Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Chantel Hunt.
Oh, thank you, Chantel, for being here. This is a proclamation declaring October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In the United States, nearly sixty percent of children are exposed to violence each year. Every nine seconds in the United States, a woman is assaulted or beaten. One in three women and one in four men have been victims of some form of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. And whereas Children's Home and Aid has been a leader in responding to the changing needs of disadvantaged children and families in Illinois for more than 125 years, the Home and Aid has paved the way to establish best practices and shape laws in child welfare, early childhood, and juvenile justice. And whereas Children's Home and Aid has been serving families parenting children following exposure to violence and has served nearly 40,000 children every year. And whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to domestic violence, we proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you for all you do and your work. We now turn to public comment, and people have an opportunity of up to three minutes to speak. We have, I believe, seven people who've registered, and so I have Bruce Meeks, Sue Felkamp, and Lee Uzzi in that order. Bruce?
A local news survey was done this month, and I want to give you just a small smidgen of the results. One of the questions was, "Are you content with the fairness, balance, and information provided by local media outlets as it relates to all government activities?" Seventy-five point fifty-four percent said no. Ten point seventy-nine percent said yes. Twelve point fifty-nine said somewhat. "Do you think the city of Bloomington elected officials are trustworthy?" Elected officials are trustworthy and honest. Fifty-three point six-zero percent said no. Ten percent said yes. Some of them, another response they can make was thirty-five percent. "Do you think the town of Norman elected officials are trustworthy and honest?" The response was fourteen percent yes, fifty percent no, somewhat thirty-five percent. "To rebuild trust and restore faith in the system of our local governing institutions, we must step outside their traditional roles and work toward a new and more integrated operating model that puts people and the addressing of their fears at the center of everything they do. For our local governing institution, the only way to build trust between citizens and government is to make bold improvements in accountability, ethics, and transparency. Simply reducing cronyism, corruption, and unethical acts or increasing transparency has not and will not itself restore trust in our local government. We must now find ways to reduce political polarization, control of our information, and the incivility in cyberspace, enable the existence of local e-government governance to be more effective again. Nothing else can build confidence like transparency and open government. Citizens cannot trust what they cannot see. When citizens are kept at arm's length with opacity and secrecy, participation is off the table. They have no choice but to serve as active opponents. Transparency enables citizens to hold local governments accountable, and yet also fosters the civic engagement that can lead to the outcomes that both citizens and reasonable local governments agree to seek." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sue Felkamp, Lee Uzzi, and Erin Lenege.
Good evening. First of all, I want you to know I trust all of you council members, and I like the job you do, so thank you very much for that. I also want to thank our police and fire departments, as Karen mentioned earlier. They work so hard, and they're never seen to be really, truly appreciated until we need them most. And for everything they see in their jobs, both police and fire, we have to really, really be thankful for what we have. We've got the best police chief, we've got the best fire chief, and I'm really proud to have them in Bloomington. Now to the unfun part. In light of what has happened with the Colosseum, I am furious. I am angry at the people that are charged with the 111 counts of the theft of government funds, theft of money laundering, of tax evasion, conspiracy to commit tax evasion, tax and wire fraud. I understand that these gentlemen have not been found guilty yet, but John Butler, I hope you're watching this, and I want you to know, I'm angry, I'm frustrated, I'm hurt, I'm disgusted, and I'm very disappointed and ashamed by the people of the Colosseum for doing what they did. They spent all of the -- they spend money of the citizens of Bloomington. Every tax penny that was spent was our money that we don't have to throw around. I'm also curious why it took so long for the city to find out that this was happening. I know that Diane Benjamin, who writes a blog, called out on it three and a half years ago, and I don't understand why it's just being dealt with now. I'm sure an investigation takes a long time, but this shouldn't happen, and I'm hoping that in the future, we're going to be a lot more watchful and methodical when looking over the books at the Colosseum. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Uzzi, Erin Lenege, and Gary Lambert.
Hi. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I do have a leather black folder, so hopefully that's just as impressive. And I'm trying to be funny, a little nervous. I don't know exactly how to present this, except just to say that you all know, for some of you know, I'm a vehicle-for-hire owner, magic bus downtown, and last year at some point, you gave the police carte blanche authority to assign parking downtown. Now, I'm not here to argue that point. I wonder if anybody can give me the word for using public resources to aid a single company over the other companies, and to cost the taxpayers money that we've complained about here before in the form of hireback? Because this is what's going on. They put all the big buses over on Center Street as opposed to Main Street. I'm not arguing that point. It's done, okay? But Mulberry, okay? Mulberry is the short street between Main and Center. They blocked off westbound lane with barricades. They leave the eastbound lane open and stationed a man squad car there for at least four to five hours a night. Why? So that Bob's Blue Knight can enter and leave at will. One company. Bob's Blue Knight has the option of using Center Street, where we're all put, where they say, you know, buses are unsafe on Main Street. There's a second man squad car at Center Street, where if you come down by the radio station, that allows buses in and out, supposed to block us from, you know, our people coming to us, you know, the traffic and whatnot, public safety. If that's not enough, you know, the man squad car there, you know, I've seen them even have another squad car at Mulberry, so three squad cars. And this has been going on for some time, and they say in the paper it's organized chaos now. Well, those are mutually exclusive terms. I mean, they're just being cheeky about public safety. The buses are being given preferential treatment to come and go on Main Street to the tune of public tax dollars. Why? It says here in 2015, the Panograph reported $130,000 on extra law enforcement. How much does three man squad cars cost, or two, let's be fair, two, you know, on those nights? How much does that cost for one company? I thought Center Street was great enough for all of us, you know? So, and I'm not even going to talk about it, you probably read in the paper, I don't agree with, you know, the not making Ubers and whatnot have to identify. You've got nothing but a cottage industry of downtown with people in their private vehicles going down, picking people up in the street. By the way, that squad car creates gridlock. We've got bottlenecking. You've got gridlock. I've got seven seconds. You cannot get an emergency vehicle down that street. So that's the organized chaos that's created an unsafe situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, and then Gary, and Scott Steimling.
Greetings, Star children. I thought I'd come up here tonight and talk about the Colosseum, and I'd try to beat the racist blog lady to the punch, so to say. So when they built the Colosseum, I voted against it. I didn't want it. It was one of the first elections I got to vote for, and that's because it's kind of turned into exactly the thing that I thought it was going to turn into, a place to have drunken barn dances with crappy country music. And that's really what it has. Every time that's something that isn't country music or music that doesn't reflect the spaceship of a town that we have, with all the different kinds of people that we have here, it is nonrepresentative of that, and I'm kind of getting sick of seeing that, especially after finding out that people running it stole money from it. Like, how many times have this place robbed us of our music? This town loves music. If you don't know this, the people of this town love the crap out of their music. They love it. And we need better music. We need to be involved in that process, because not only does it make money, it makes this place more livable. I mean, the castle's killing it. They're bringing good stuff, and that's at least a positive in that. You know, like, in the spirit of this town loves music, I really do think that we need public space for people that are trying to put a band together to practice. There needs to be, like, serious discussion about this. This is a serious problem. People get tickets for this stuff. Like, it's been a problem in the past. We need public pianos. I was joking around up here one time. We really do need some kind of public piano, musical sculpture. Times are tough, man. Music saves lives. And that's the skinny of this, is that we need to do this, and if we don't, you know, like, if we're going to just have this stupid argument about the Colosseum over and over again, the same stupid financial conversation, do something for the music.
Thank you. Gary Lambert, Scott Steimling, and Angela Scott.
Good evening. It's not with joy that I'm here tonight. I'm ashamed of my alderman, of this city council, past and present, our mayor, past and present, our city manager, past and present, and our city attorney, and throw into it some of the financial management of the city. They have all shown complete disregard for the city's public money. Last meeting, you added two new people. My alderman asked the right questions. Is it an emergency? What's the impact if we don't do it? Well, the answer was honest, none, yet he went ahead and voted for it. What we have here is a council that's go along and get along. I sat in a courtroom a couple of years ago now with Mr. Hales and Mr. Jurgens, where they were defending SIAM and the city in a private citizen's lawsuit, trying to get at the bottom of this. This is nothing new, and you can't tell me that this city management was not aware of what was going on. Perhaps some of you did too, because who knows what goes on in your private citizens sessions? There has, I don't know, I probably said enough, probably said too much. When we got a new management company over at the Colosseum, how long did it take the manager of that organization to realize what was going on? A few weeks? So he decided he was going to get on an easy take, too. Previous company had been getting by with it for years. Fortunately, his company took care of that situation. I don't know that this organization will ever found that out. I've said enough, probably won't be speaking here again. I am ashamed of you.
Scott Steimling and Angela Scott.
Scott Steimling, Ward five. My concern is with the, I think that our deputy city manager does a great job, but I can't say the same for the city manager. I'm thrilled to see him leave. I felt the same way when the police chief, when our current police chief and his predecessor brought in from outside departments. What was wrong with promoting from within? You know, what gives them the incentive to want to do better? Okay, I do not recall connect transit routes being, you know, well-defined, other than connect, it was what was beneficial to connect transit. Some of these people, you know, they don't really care. All they care about is the riders, and I've seen 66-passenger buses with nobody on them. I've seen some with two people on them. And I wonder if the bus stops could have something to do with this. Let's see Mr. Hales take the city bus. I am extremely disappointed with the city council and your liberalism. Every time you want to do one thing, and you go ahead and you do it anyway, and you suck the taxpayers into it. I guess the thing is, all sidewalks in this city were to be ADA accessible in 1990, and we're still waiting. I wonder if I'd be that late with paying my property tax, my property would still be there. You know good and well it wouldn't be, and, but again, I cannot emphasize enough that we've got a great city manager and our deputy city manager, and why not promote from within? Thank you very much.
And last speaker is Angela Scott.
This is my second council meeting. Last time I came, I was pretty happy to be here. It was for a neighborhood thing. I am disgusted and disappointed and ashamed of every single elected official. First, because we have a bully as mayor, and none of you have said a word, so you're all guilty. That's what they say. They teach junior high children that. When there's a bully and you sit by and you don't publicly do something about it, you are all guilty. Secondly, you guys don't want to talk about Black Lives Matters. I am for Black Lives Matters. I believe in it. But let me tell you, I live at 103 Donny Drive. If you don't know where that is, look it up. There are families that are poor. They make no money. You want to raise their fees. They're black families. They don't make enough money to make it. $10 might not mean crap to you a month, but let me tell you, to those families, it means something. I'm ashamed, ashamed of all of you. You all want to talk about being liberal and how you're so different from Donald Trump. You're not. You have your meetings, and nobody stands up for what's right. Why can't you just be decent human beings? It's not that hard. And that's all, and I probably won't be back either.
Thank you. Now we turn to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are determined to be routine in nature. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda? Alderman Mathie?
Seven D and seven H, please.
Seven D is in dog?
Yeah.
And H?
Yes, please.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D and H? So moved by Alderman Hellman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Bray. Any further conversation? See if I can make this work this week. It passes nine to nothing. There are no nays to announce. All right, Alderman Mathie, D, and H are on you.
Seven D, I just wanted to, I actually would like to make a motion that we tabled this one. We didn't have any of our local vendors who were given an opportunity to participate in the signs for the new arena, and I just think it's worth sitting on this a couple of weeks in order to allow those. I know we have at least two different vendors in Bloomington who could make these signs as well. I just want, I would like to give them the opportunity to be able to bid on this as well, since they're paying Bloomington tax dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Go ahead, you have a second.
Is there a second? I'll second that one. Second by Alderman Hellman, and then discussion, Mr. Hales?
Yes, I'd like to ask Terry Dietrich, the assistant over there at the arena for Venue Works. Two things, if you could, Terry. I know, one, if you could address that, there appears to be, what, two sign companies in town that have indicated we're not given an opportunity to bid on this. And then, secondly, is there any consequences to tabling this for two weeks? You know, is there anything that the council may need to be aware of? If you could address those two items, just for information purposes.
Sure. First and foremost, I know Lynn wanted to be here. She's out ill today, so she apologizes. Lynn had worked on this project from the start, but what she had told me is she had contacted five different local companies back in, I think, the end of July. She doesn't remember all their names, but they were unable to do the signage, so she'd contacted two other ones that do arena signage, plus the one that had previously done the US Coliseum, which, those are the three bids that went out, and then that came back from Benson as being the lowest bid on those arena signs to come in. And now that the bids are out and the bids are public, the only concern is, is now everybody knows what the numbers are.
And I understand that, too. I was thinking about it, that maybe it's, you know, Lynn being a little newer to the area, but both of the companies that have the ability to create the signage, signs, are both companies that we have paid to service the old signs when it was still US Coliseum. So there wasn't a link drawn there somehow, that we've asked them to work on them and repair them before in the past, that they could also create them? I reached out to both of them just to see, and they don't have any record that they were contacted, so maybe it was just five different companies who couldn't do it, and she missed the two in town who could. But I don't know what to do about the fact that there are already, you know, open bids. I'm not sure how we handled that, but...
If I could ask one other, was a public notice put in the paper about this bid solicitation? That's the other way we try and sometimes catch, you know, if that was done.
I don't know. That might be more of a Lynn answer, but I don't recall her saying that.
Okay, all right. I didn't see any record of that. It's...
I mean, I don't want to hold things up, but we do have an ordinance in place to try to give preferential treatment to our local vendors, since, you know, and I don't know how this all plays out, but to me, it's worth it to wait a couple of weeks and see. And it's possible, they might not want to bid on this, right? I mean, but I would rather, I'd feel better if we at least asked them.
And how about answering the second question? If it was tabled, even if that meant, let's, that they, if we do go through the bidding process, again, is there any time issues that the council needs to be aware of?
Well, I know Lynn wanted to have these up by October, and I think that was her guideline, to have these things. And I know Grossinger Motors has also really been waiting to get these up, because they've invested a great deal of money and want to see their name on the building.
All right. Just wanted to make sure the council had the benefit of anything they might add. I'll just say that it's unfortunate, truly, if there's some companies out there that have the capacity and the ability to bid... have the capacity and the ability to bid, we certainly want them. I'm not aware that we have a comprehensive, up-to-date bidders list, where we tried to even, in very specific outreach, tried to have an ongoing, continued record of who wants to be notified of bids. But even when you, you can have the best possible inventory of bidder's information, still, what, the fallback position is always to put a notice in the paper, because we can't maintain that perfect knowledge, and that's unfortunate that wasn't done in this case, because at least there could have been a public record. But I'll just turn it back to the council. It is, it does, you know, typically when you do put bid information out there and then go through a second, we could get some complaints from those who did submit the bids first go around, but I understand the concern, too. Now, we will, by sharing this specs information, if it is tabled, we will determine, can those two companies truly provide the services requested? But that'll be our effort if you do table it, and more than likely, if they can bid on it, then we'll go through a second bidding scenario and make sure they have an opportunity to bid. And as, as the Alderman said, there is a local preference policy that goes into play on local companies as well, so.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, and, and thank you for the information. I'm sympathetic to, to the motion. I guess my question more is procedural. Greg, what are some of the legal implications of us going back and trying to solicit local folks after we've already had the bid out and the process has been followed?
Well, like David said, we would have to go back and redo the bid process after contacting them, so we go back and solicit these bids again.
Because conceivably, they might have an advantage, because I don't know how this works. Can they see, during the bid process, can somebody, one company review somebody else's bid before they submit their bid and make adjustments? I mean, they'll see this at the very end when we're, when it's approved, but during that initial process?
Typically, the bids are sealed until open. But in this case, since the bids have been open, they're able to see those now.
Right.
And so they, yes, they have access to that information. And if we did another round of bidding, they wouldn't, in theory, be able to see what was presented to us until we opened those bids, but they'd have a good idea based on what's already been submitted, what would likely be submitted again.
Thank you. And so just so I'm clear, are you suggesting, Alderman Mathie, that we open up an entirely new bid process to try to grab some of these, or are we?
That would be my preference, yes.
Okay. Because again, I understand it, but my, my discomfort falls in the fact that we are ultimately violating our own process, and we are giving, I mean, what's the next time we have, you know, maybe a pavement company doesn't submit a bid on time and we reopen it? I mean, that's, that's tough. And so I, I'm sympathetic and I understand it. Okay.
Any other comments before we vote? So if you vote yes, we are voting to table this for two weeks. Correct?
And reopen the bid process.
And reopen the bid process, yes.
And reopen bid.
That is a yes vote, you are suggesting, right, Mayor Protem? A yes vote, we need to do that.
To table it and reopen it in two weeks.
Can I, I just want some clarification on that motion, if I could. Again, because I, I see a couple of scenarios. If you want, definitely for the city, I'm just thinking of the timing. We can reach out to those two companies. If, in fact, as they look at the specs, which I don't think they had the benefit of, if they look at the specs and they say, you know what, we cannot do this work, then we could come back and really award the bid in two weeks. If we go to them and they say, yes, we can do the work, then in two weeks, I'm just trying to, Greg, see how we can expedite the time. If they can bid, then what we would want to do is, in two weeks, have you terminate, or let's see, reject all bids, and then we'll go out and resolicit. Now, and that would mean it could be a month away before approximately we're back with a revised bid or award. So I just wanted to share with you, because I have seen vendors in the past say they could meet specs, but when they start looking at the detail, and I think there is some unique aspects to these signs, and again, that may not be the case. They could possibly do them, but we need to have them verify by looking at the specs that they can comply. So I just wanted to share with you.
Do we need to reframe the motion, then? Is that what?
It'd be helpful, because I'm just not quite sure I understood the second part. You know, do you want us to rebid it? And if so, that action tonight, we can get a jump on having these to submit a bid, whether they have that capacity to do that or not.
I'll amend my motion to say that I, we should reject these bids as presented and rebid the entire project.
That'd save us a little time.
Because, I mean, it's not an insignificant project.
That's right.
So this is, this is not like little, this is a big enough one that it's going to make, it could make a difference to our local entities.
All right, so everybody understand the motion? Oh, do we need a second, then, on the amendment? Yes, okay, a second, okay.
So a question, then. So David, based on the amended motion, and I guess I'm, I'm empathetic to what I hear Scott saying, because I have some of those same, same thoughts as well. Are we setting up some type of a precedent here by, by rejecting unsealed bids, open bids, in order to go back and, and potentially rebid this?
No. The answer is no. There's, there's been, on rare occasions, that we have rejected bids and gone through, through the bidding situation again, and, and those who submitted bids the first go around, you know, could conceivably have been at a disadvantage, because those who bid the second time will at least know what the others bid the first go around, but that doesn't mean that has to be the same bid they submit the second time around. So we, we try to avoid that, but, you know, I, I think we're all hoping that these individuals do have the capacity and will submit a bid the second time around, and we'll see how they come in at that point in time, and we'll bring those bids with a recommendation back to the council. Can I ask one other thing? How much time did we give these individuals submit this bid? Is this a quick turnaround?
Yeah, I want to say it was a couple of weeks or so. Lynn had handled that project, but it was at least a couple of weeks.
We'll give them whatever time they need, you know, and what's reasonable, and so.
Alderman Hellman?
I have a question, and I don't know if it would be Terry or David. Is Venue Works, do they follow our same purchasing process? I mean, should this have gone, should there have been a public notice about this?
I guess they are supposed to follow our procurement code and procurement policies. What I don't recall is what is the specific, it varies, so, but we will check on that to see, too, is, was a public notice required here, or was there any exceptions? I don't know that, you know, all the particulars. I just wasn't that close to it.
Okay, thanks. All right, are we ready to vote, then? It should be on. It has failed five to four. Could you announce the nays?
Alderman Sage, Alderman Malamoy, Alderman Painter, Alderman Schmidt, and Alderman Black.
Do we need another motion to approve, then?
Yep.
May I have a motion to approve? Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Let me. Start the vote again. It passes seven to two. There are two nays to announce.
Alderman Mathie and Alderman Bray.
Thank you. We move to item 7H. Alderman Mathie?
I just need to recuse myself. I'm a member of Sunrise Rotary.
Okay, well, we'll come and get you in just a second here. This is for the application for Sunrise Rotary for a liquor license for an event. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Alderman Hellman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Malamoy. And motion carries eight to nothing. Thank you. All right, now we move to item 8A. This is an RFP for taxable capital lease. And David, did you want to start this off?
Yes, I'd like Patty Lynn Silva, the Finance Director, to come and make this recommendation on this item regarding financing taxable capital equipment lease for, what, the current fiscal year, I think.
Yes, good evening. This is our annual capital lease, and it's on the agenda because it's such a high dollar amount, so we just want to make sure that you guys are informed. But this is actually a calendar year 17 lease, and all of this equipment has been purchased or is fully committed to, and we issue the lease on a reimbursement basis, so that we don't issue a lease and pay debt service on if, if the equipment is not purchased. So there's a full list of the five-month and the 10, I mean, the five-year and 10-year lease, and of the three bidders that are there, we went with the lowest bid. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Are there questions or a motion? I'm sorry.
Move.
Okay, all right. Motion made by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. I'm sorry. Can you push that again? Thank you. Okay, the motion passes nine to nothing. Thank you. We move to item 8B, which is the ordinance that would amend our sanitary sewer and stormwater rates, and we have an addendum to that that offers the two options that we discussed on Monday at our Committee of the Whole meeting. Mr. Hales, you want to get started?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City Council tonight, in the, and I'm, I'm looking at the addendum from Friday, and included in that packet, you have two ordinances before you tonight for consideration. The, the staff recommendation is Ordinance A, and I've heard different terms being used for this, but I think as you take a look at this Ordinance A, this is basically making the fee increase, as I understand it, in one year's time. So it's just kind of a one-time increase in the fee. The alternative, or Ordinance B, is to basically effectuate the very similar or same increase, but to spread it out over a five-year period. Those are the two ordinances we're bringing to you tonight for consideration. We also believe that there may be some, some desire possibly to look at some aspects of that. You might notice that these ordinance do talk about a, a 3% increase in the fees at some point in the future. Furthermore, there is an effective date, I believe, for both, that would take effect May 1st, as opposed to something, sometime sooner. And I think in the past, there was even some discussion, well, would you want to maybe make the effective date, say, January 1st, in the middle of the wintertime? Not that there's a lot of right or wrong to that, but sometimes, you know, changes like this can be made in the wintertime. We're not making any further presentation. Staff has done that, and really, we're bringing these two options to the council for your action, and to see which preference you had, and any further amendments you might have in any, either the Ordinance A or B. So staff stands ready to answer any other questions, but we do think it's probably more for you to consider which version you would, the majority might favor over the other, or no action on either ordinance. Thank you.
I believe when we closed out our Committee of the Whole meeting last Monday, there was a majority in favor of the immediate increase, which is $6.06, as opposed to the longer fee of $2.20, but I've also heard some conversation over the week that indicates that there may be some further discussions, so I'll open it up for discussion and/or a motion.
Mayor Protem, I would like to move that we proceed with Ordinance, Ordinance A, amending Chapter 37 of the City Code to increase the sanitary sewer and stormwater rates. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Alderman Bray. Is there more conversation about this?
I'd just like to say that I've been torn and have heard from folks both ways, but the majority of the people that I've heard from are, are saying, just do it, we need it, we need to make sure our infrastructure is sound and go with it.
Alderman Mathie?
I've heard much the same thing, that it's, it's an ongoing issue for so many years that people just want us to start making real progress towards getting it fixed. There's a lot of concern, though, that I've heard in terms of adding new employees to the payroll. You know, the, the original presented project added, I think it was 9.5 FTE, and that is the biggest concern that I've been hearing from people, is if we have a project that is slated to last three to eight years, how are those employees sunsetted? How does that work? And a lot of conversations I had that the easiest way to do this might be just to add an amendment right now that says that we want this to be handled by external contractors, and we don't want the, you know, permanent employees added for what is hopefully going to be a temporary project. So I'm not sure we're.
Mayor Protem, could I just add, I, I would recommend you not include that, but I am working on a resolution to bring back to the full council, which I think will accomplish the same thing. And that is, I've heard that as well. Personally, I do not support hiring, you know, as full-time employees, that which is recommended in the stormwater and sanitary sewer master plan, but I think what I've heard for many years is not, it's not, never been unanimous, but I've heard a lot of council members say, let's try to avoid, for long-term financial sustainability, that just continuing to add full-time employees with the extra cost of defined benefit pension plans, with all the, the additional regulations associated with the progressive disciplinary, et cetera, et cetera. And I agree with you. I think for a very aggressive kind of capital, capital improvement plan, it lends itself to contract out a lot of those services. And that services could be everything from design to bidding to construction oversight and inspection. I think the wisest thing we can do as a city is maintain a lean, and sometimes an extremely lean, but core cadre of very competent, highly skilled, full-time employees, but resist this urge to hire on additional employees, especially for, for capital projects. So if you would permit me, I'd like to bring back that document, because I, I know it won't. probably be passing by unanimous, but I think that's a good way, because that will affect not only these positions, but I think it ought to be something we memorialize in a written policy statement by the council for all new hires, whether it's engineers, or whether it's maybe support staff, or maybe it's other individuals. I think that is something that we need to get clarified in writing, and I'll be bringing that back to you within 30 days. That's perfectly acceptable for me. Thank you.
I'm going to continue to vote no. As I said last Monday, this is not about not understanding how serious our needs are in this area, but I've been continually frustrated over the last several years at our seeming inability to really look at the budget as a whole. And I think we really owe it to everybody to look at the whole budget and to make some cuts as well. And I'm very uncomfortable with the way that we seem to continue to raise one fee in isolation of the budget. So I'll look forward to our budget conversations for this. Alderman Bray?
So I'm going to vote yes for this, and the reason being is that I see this as a winning proposition for our community. First off, we've made mention that there'll be some employment opportunities for folks coming, in whatever form that may be. And we're going to also address an issue of public health and welfare when you're talking about sewer and sanitation areas. As I've talked to people since deciding to run and then now getting on the council, the one thing everyone wants to talk about is addressing the infrastructure. They've told me that's a priority. They want the sewers fixed so that they can get their streets and their sidewalks fixed. They say it's number-one priority. So for my, to me, by addressing it, pulling it out in this manner, we're showing that it is the priority. And also, I think that we have the right people in place to execute on this now. So that's why I'll be voting yes.
Alderman Malamoy?
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I definitely understand the need to address our infrastructure issues, but I do think I'm always very cautious, like I said before, you know, not to raise fees so dramatically on our citizens. And I never want to make the assumption, you know, I mean, $6 a month might seem like little to some, but I never want to make the assumption that it's, you know, it's not a lot for others. So I, and I always like to give people an opportunity to be able to plan their life, as opposed to, and I feel like an immediate increase doesn't give people that opportunity to really look at how they're going to adjust to this particular situation. And I'm still not, I mean, if the need is really, you know, is pressing, I know there are some things that we still need to do in terms of televising, and I think we can get that done. We're not going to be able to do a whole lot of the work without the televising that we've talked about earlier. And I think, you know, we just need to take our time in terms of putting these increases in place.
Thank you. Alderman Black?
Thank you. And thank you, Jim, and staff, and David, and everybody who's worked on this, Patty Lynn, too, with all the financial projections that we've been asking for in different deep dives, we're asking for different models, scenarios, you know, projections, all that. And I just want to point out, because we've talked about this ad nauseam, but on page 295 and 296 of the packet, there is a very clear line of sight between where this money, if approved, would go to. All very valid things, all things that need to be done. And I think that's really different as part of our culture, really trying to create a strategic vision for how tax dollars are spent. And so if somebody in the future wants to watch this meeting and see why we raised rates if we do, and where that money's going, we are being very deliberate and methodical about where that's going. I, too, share the concern that we are doing this outside of the budget process at a later point in time, but I will say that I'm going to vote yes for it with the clear understanding that when we get to the budget process down the road, we are going to have to have a very serious and deliberate, what is the city getting out of the business of? This isn't, let's not have waters, you know, bottled waters, or what can we, you know, skim here and there. We need to be very clear and direct about this, because looking at these projections, and, you know, we'll be talking about that in a bit, what our year-end financials are, I'm very concerned about the next fiscal year after this one. And I will be very pointed in how we craft our budget, how we go about it, and the parts that we either get out of the business of, or how we spend our money. So I'm looking forward to that conversation, but I'm also dreading it in the sense that it's going to be very challenging, and it's going to put a lot of pressure on all of us, because I remember the summer of Zumba, where we took out Zumba classes, and people were very, very upset. And for every one thing, there's an equal and obvious reaction. So we'll have to keep that in mind. But I just want to praise staff for the really methodical, deep-dive look that we have, because this is the information that I think residents are expecting, that we look for, and that really create that trust and accountability in government that I think people need more of, and we're providing it.
Okay. Alderman Painter?
Well, what concerns me is with both of these models, there's a 3% increase every year thereafter. And I'm not sure that that will be warranted. So, I don't know. I have a problem with that. And, you know, my hope was that we could pay for this and then have it end. But the way that this has been presented, it will be an ongoing rate increase forevermore. And because of that, I can't go along with it. So I'm going to be voting no. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, could I just make one comment? We have a main motion on the table. An Alderman, such as yourself, could make an amendment to the motion to delete that particular provision. And if that passes, that comes out, and then when the vote on the main motion is taken, there would not be a 3%. So I just want to make sure the council knows of the option they have to maybe strike, you know, one aspect that maybe is problemsome to getting final action.
Well, I think it would be reasonable to, after the first year, maybe raise it 3% and then give it a break for a year, and then after that, raise it 3%. And then come back to the table and discuss it. And I would also like to take out the new hires that were built into this as well, because I'd like that to be discussed by the council each time they wanted to hire someone. I think that we need to hear about it and know if there are other alternatives and ways that we could contract out.
I think the latter part of it would be answered by David's proposed policy that he wants to bring back to us. With the 3%, are you proposing a motion? I'm, I'm sorry, amendment to the motion. So can you clarify that? Because it sounded like it was 3% for one year and then off again.
And then on again. Like there would be two, 3% within a five-year period, and then after that, come back and discuss it again.
Is there a second on that amendment? Are you seconding? Oh, okay. Okay, I think that motion died. Okay. Alderman Burgis?
No, I just had a question. I thought...
Yeah, well, I think we're back to questions now.
Yes, but if that's not going to be an amendment, then I don't have a call.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. So I think we're ready for our vote, then. Alderman Black, I'm still, there we go. The motion passes five to four. Could you announce the names, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Sage, Alderman Malamoy, Alderman Painter, and Alderman Schmidt.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for all the hard work that went into this. And this goes into effect, then, May 1st, not January 1st?
Right.
Okay, great. We move to our final agenda item, which is our year-end financial review with Patty Lynn Silva.
As our Finance Director is coming forward, let me just mention a few things. Tonight's presentation and overview is based on our records after most, but maybe not all, a year-end adjustments have been made into the fiscal year 2017 budget. The others that may come is just as the audit's completed. But we wanted to get to you this kind of year-end review. And I do want to just draw attention, this year-end review is, I believe, very important, because on the budget calendar you have before you, a key date coming up is the pre-budget presentation, or I'll call it the pre-budget fiscal policy workshop, or Committee of the Whole for Monday, October 16. The intent that night is to really, at a very high level, get into and have the council react to some very specific budget preparation options that I'll be preparing and working with Patty Lynn, as well as the directors. That will be the directive going out for directors to prepare budget proposals for fiscal year 2019. So tonight, we thought it would be helpful to kind of show to you what did the year-end look like last year, after all but the final audit adjustments? What was the financial condition? And then, as we start that workshop next month, we'll also give you an update of how is the current fiscal year progressing? What are some of the positives, negatives, as far as revenues and expenditures, as well as what will be some of the early predictions or projections for possible revenue and expenditure, more than likely, revenue projections for fiscal year 2009? So we'll turn over to the Finance Director to just go through some highlights, the fiscal year 2017 budget year, which ended April 30th. And I think, too, you have one additional handout, Patty, that you had prepared for distribution tonight?
I did not. I apologize.
Okay, let me, Steve, if you wouldn't mind just going and making copies. This is just a detailed, I think you gave me a copy of this, yeah.
I'm...
Jerry can help.
I apologize.
We'll kind of get to that at the end-year presentation. Thanks.
A little bit of a crazy day today. So before you, you have the General Fund, which is our largest fund and one that I thought that we would focus on. What you have in the packet is the full April 30th, 2017, monthly financial report. And the audit is not yet complete, but these numbers are very, very close to, I'm not anticipating any significant changes. So as you look at the revenue to expense, you can see that we had a favorable activity of $3.2 million, but we have $2 million of encumbrances and restricted revenue, which is the utility revenue, and I'm looking just at the bottom now, is the restricted revenue that we received for pensions. And so that leaves us with about a $1.2 million surplus for the year, which coincidentally is how we adopted the budget, with a $1.5 million surplus. So with all the ups and downs and challenges that we weathered throughout the year, and even with some budget transfers and a purchase of property, the city is still ending the year with $1.2 million surplus in the General Fund, which is wonderful news. And it's approximately $15 million or 15% fund balance, which for the city is a high and is in compliance with our fund balance policy for the General Fund. As you look across, you can see on the revenue side up top, if you follow taxes across, we have some challenges this year. Taxes make up about 80% of our revenue. There were multiple challenges this year, in particular in the income tax. Because of a retroactive federal legislative change, people were able to immediately deduct large purchases of equipment, which factored into lowering their AGI for their state taxes, and that's why we received less state income tax. So even federal legislation has the ability to impact us. And then, the corresponding behavior to that was a large purchase of equipment, because there was a large deduction immediately available. And so we received more money on the sales tax side, which was wonderful. So net-net, as we watch these things throughout the year, and by the way, the taxes are broken down further out for you, our major revenues, but income tax, we also had, a couple pages back from there, I apologize, I don't have it in terms of packet page numbers. Utility tax was also under, there were still really good rates, utility rates, and we received taxes on the grocery sheet. So if consumption goes down, and natural gas rates are still good, you know, our revenue would correspondingly go down. We have some slight reductions in the local motor fuel tax, not largely based on the low prices of gasoline, but we also saw some consumption decreases, probably related to the Mitsubishi staff. And last vehicle use tax was somewhat under budget. But overall, we ended the year with some positive revenues, which is great. What you now have in front of you, and thank you so much, Steve, I appreciate that, is the department savings on the expenditure side, how they ended the year. As you can see, there were some significant savings in salaries due to vacancies in some of our larger departments. Our contractuals are made up of engineering fees, temporary employees, sorry, I've got my list here, repair and maintenance, advertising, printing and binding, professional development, janitorial audit, and rentals. So in this contractual line item, there's just quite a bit of things that go into that, and we had some significant savings there as well. In the commodity line item, that's our utilities, we had significant savings in fuel again this year, salt, as you can imagine, natural gas was down, electricity and water, and office supplies. So we had some significant savings there. As you move down to principal and interest, that is related to the debt service for the lease we just executed retroactively, so we have some savings there. And the $1.4 million in savings you see there was really that built-in surplus we were talking about, the $1.5 million, and so that adds to the savings. And David, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything based on that information that we just handed out?
Yes, I would, as Patty mentioned. We, and I think this is unfortunate, because as we've talked to both the plate, well, first off, let me point out, when you look at just labor costs on salaries and benefit, it's just a little under $50 million, at the $108 million of this budget. And we have been, we've had a number of vacancies throughout the city organization, both in police and fire, as well in BCPA and others. So there's no doubt that vacancies did help create some of those savings on the expenditures part. And I don't know if we have an exact number, but nevertheless, that's, we always try to budget accordingly and maybe anticipate that we won't be at full staffing. I think the police chief even mentioned that all the time he's been here, they've never achieved full staffing. And I think that's in part because we're seeing still the baby boomer generation, which we have a high percentage of, continuing to retire, and that's having an impact. I think a second conclusion I look at, as I look at some of the savings, is we are having a challenge in that with limited staffing, we, there is some of the work we're not getting to, and again, that's not everything. But just in our prior discussion, I think it's also maybe an indication that we can do more to contract out some of this work. And just as we were talking about, you know, contracting out capital projects, many cities, their entire, as an example, their entire engineering department is contracted out. We contract out... We contract out most of our legal costs and expenses. But I think from a standpoint that that's also something we need to work on. Once we do get projects budgeted, I think it is incumbent upon us to do more to ensure that we get those projects done. And as we had a prior discussion, if we don't have the manpower to help oversee the design contract, we can do that with contract labor. So I think that's part of it. But Patty also mentioned that, you know, it's also some of the contractuals, the commodities, you know, the weak winter, you know, gave us a tremendous amount of savings, what, nearly $423,000? And the last point I just want to draw out to you is that as we plan towards this Committee of the Whole on the 16th, I think we will be laying out for you some scenarios of how we want to see the directors prepare that budget going forward. As an example, if we do not have the wherewithal to accomplish everything that they request from the departments, then we ought to lower our expectations and align what we want to get achieved with the level of staffing, or either be more aggressive in the contracting area. When you look at the potential saving, well, the savings that were generated, I think that's pretty significant. Now, keep in mind, sooner or later, we will continue to get back to full staffing, or closer to that. But nevertheless, I think that's a challenge for us. I don't think we've seen the last of what could be some projected structural deficits for fiscal year 2019. You do want to keep in mind that this year, in fiscal year 2018, we had a very lean capital project list in the General Fund, because we just didn't feel like there was enough excess revenue to help assure that we could project that. So, but I think this is, it's good to look this over. And as we continue to work with the directors and as we prepare for our Committee of the Whole, we're going to be spending some serious time saying, how can we make sure that as we lay out some options and the council picks some of those, that we can start out preparing a budget that is going to be equal to, you know, what you want to see when that final city manager's recommended budget comes your way in February? Is there anything else from the state standpoint? I think some of the, you mentioned on income tax, and if you go back to page nine, you'll see that we took a loss of about $922,000, a big drop, probably one of the largest drops. Do we have any indication if that's going to be repeated in a year or two? Or is...
The way we would normally budget for that is we would, we would be conservative and go with a lower number. So we would keep it at this year and look to IML to help us to understand the federal and what state changes so that we can look at our revenue. I think, again, if you give a deduction retroactively while the budget's ongoing for people to buy large purchases of equipment, you just don't know what kind of, we saw one example of some consumer behavior, but we don't know what all those other things are, and so it's really hard to predict. But we would, we would take this into account, and we would be conservative, and we would be probably budgeting in 19 for around $7.3 million unless there was some, something that really came to light that would, that would ask us to, that would help us improve those benefits. But, you know, we always err on the side of being conservative.
The last two comments I just want to make, as I give credit to Patty and her staff, I still, even as you look at the revenue side, surplus of $3.2 million, and as you look at each one of the major revenue items on a line item by line item basis, they spent a great deal of time in analyzing, trying to come up with those early projections well before the start of the fiscal year. I think they just did a phenomenal job coming so close to the budget, you know, versus the projections. So that's terrific. And then I think appreciation needs to be given to the directors, because with only a few exceptions, most of the General Fund departments came in under budget. And that's how we want to see that. And so I think there was a lot of that cost control doing what, you know, they could accomplish, but I think we do need to have more and more discussion going forward. How can we avoid increasing full-time labor costs, but still have an aggressive program to achieve what we budget for and make sure it's done in a timely basis and throughout the year, not just towards the end? But again, the directors and all the employees, I think, came through to help really watch the spending of money and to help make sure we came in the budget, under budget. Any questions, mayor or council might have?
Something, something for the October 16th session, it was something that Alderman Mathie actually reminded me of this week, is a water rate, that water, we're probably due for a water rate study. Do we have a timing on that?
A water master plan?
Well, right.
Oh, okay.
The question was about the rate study and potential rate...
And what I'd first like to say is what we are underway right now with is a water master plan. And while we have a lot of good elements of that, we're trying to fill in the gaps. That water master plan, when completed, will give us that more clear picture of what are the long-term needs in the water fund, which will help us to then do a very good updated water rate study.
Timing? What might be the timing for that?
Let's see, Bob's not here, is he? I'm trying to think, does anyone recall when he, Steve, when they hoped to have the water master plan completed? Is that spring of next year, summer of next year?
Probably, but I don't, I don't have a number to commit to that. I'll find out.
Okay. Yeah, so we don't know that. But I will say, because the water fund is sitting on about how much in the way of reserves?
About $25 million. It's actually more than the General Fund. So we have some time, that gives us time.
Because of that, that's not as urgent as sanitary sewer and stormwater, which, you know, we were about out of cash reserves in those two, and we desperately needed action. So we have a little bit more time on the water. But I would say more than likely, at least within two years, I can see coming back with a water rate study, saying what, if any, changes should be made in those water rates.
Thank you very much for all your work on Alderman, right?
Well, again, thank you for your work on this, and thank you for the staff for just being so diligent about putting the numbers together and getting so close. I just wanted to take a moment to comment about the Pepsi Ice Center profit and loss statement. You know, I think anecdotally in the community, folks are saying ICE pays, ICE pays for itself, ICE is popular. And when you look at these numbers, you know, the numbers say the same thing, right?
Yes, they do.
So when we think about possible catalyst projects for our city, and we know that we have over-demand, right? Our current Pepsi Ice Center has a strong demand for programs and services. And the demand is well above the market trends, just in this city. So maybe we can look at some ICE solutions possibly for our catalyst project for downtown. Just encouraging to me. So thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
People love our ICE. Okay. All right, I think we're finished with this.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again very much. David, over to you.
Let's see, I guess I have one bit of news to share with you. And I'll have more to say, but I, you know, I just have reached out to you all to let you know that I was extended a offer of employment with the City of Joliet, which I accepted, have executed an employment agreement with them that would call for my last day here with the City of Bloomington to be somewhere around the end of November. With that being said, you know, in the quote I gave the public through the newspaper and to you, you know, that's been a very, very difficult decision for us, for my wife and I. And so I'm not going to get an ending to a final speech now. I would like to propose and have a little time to give that, as I near that. But I'm committed to continue to do all I can while I'm here with two months, like to continue to work and do all I can to establish a good, strong foundation for the beginning preparation of this budget for fiscal year 19. Also continuing to help you hopefully move closer to final adoption of a five-year capital improvement plan. Your action tonight, I think, is one of the most critical decisions you could make to help us with that. There is one, however, large issue, and that's what we discussed last time, is how do we fund general fund-related capital expenditures? And right now, we do not have a dedicated revenue source. We do not have an existing surplus revenue source to help us in that. So I think that's the last remaining huge gap, hole, and it is a massive one, to fund anything from replacement of the O'Neil pool, building a new operation center, to relocate public works, you know, to fund either a downtown catalyst project, library, the list goes on and on. So I think that's a major issue for us. But nevertheless, I'll stand, continue to, committed to do all I can in the next couple of months and to assist you. But with that being said, I have nothing else to show or share with the council tonight other than, you know, whenever people are asked, when you get a new job, they ask, well, what are you going to do next? And they always say, well, you're, you know, you're going to go to Disneyland. And that's where I'm going. Wednesday, and that's a fact.
Wow.
My little granddaughter and her little brother, baby brother invited my wife and I to go with them to Anaheim and to go to Disneyland. So I'll be gone later this week on that. And it just so happened that there's also a new job that's coming up. So anyway, but I'll be back next week.
To seize those opportunities every time they come up, absolutely. Well, David, you know, congratulations on this job, and we're sorry to lose you. You've really pulled us out of some pretty dark spots, so. And more on that, as you say, as we have, we have some time to think about that. David and I have talked a little bit, I'm sure all of us have been asked about what our plans are for an interim city manager, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that with Mayor Renner when he's back. We have a lot of options available to us, and so it should be a good conversation. Over to you, folks. Anything for the good of the order, or a motion to adjourn? You're going to do that one, are you? A motion to adjourn by Alderman Malamoy? Is there a second?
Second.
A second hit by Alderman Hammond. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are done.